I think it's my computer. Okay, good afternoon or evening, everyone. Welcome to the April 16, 2025 hearing on school choice. A little bit early before our regularly scheduled school committee meeting to have the public hearing as we are required to do every year. And I will ask our superintendent of schools, Ms. Sarah Shannon, to please introduce the concept of school choice and what this public hearing is about. Yes, thank you. Mr. Chair, ask every member that is present to indicate so on roll call. Mr. Carr is not present. Mr. Dial?
Present.
Mrs. Hannah is not present. Mrs. Luskey?
Present.
And the chair is present. President Plon gives us a quorum of three voting members. So at this point, I would like to formally call to order the public hearing on school choice and ask our superintendent of schools, Ms. Sarah Shannon, please introduce this concept.
So, thank you very much. So, every year, each school district needs to revisit the idea of school choice. School choice. Should you vote for school choice would mean that we, as a Cohasset Public School District, would allow students from other districts to make the choice to come to our schools. It would mean that we get their per pupil expenditure, modified per pupil expenditure from their sending districts. It would be about $5,000 per student from those sending districts and $2,500 for kindergarteners. We are not currently a school choice district. And so tonight is really to open the conversation and deliberate or hear public comment as to why we should or should not be a school choice district and then to vote on that. As well.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent Shannon. At this point, I will just advise all of our community members that are participating virtually, that you can utilize the Q and A feature on Zoom to make any of your concerns or opinions or perspectives known. Otherwise, we will simply hear from anyone in the audience present. I don't think anyone is present in the audience. So we'll give you an opportunity to generate any sort of concerns or questions. In the meantime, we can just go around and have the school committee state any comments they may have or thoughts they may have on the issue. Just go in alphabetical order, Mr. Dial.
Just actually, one quick question is my own notification. If you're, if you opt in, you could be in that. Students can leave and go to another district. Can students go to another district now if there's a, like a hangup instead of school?
Yes.
So we can always lose students. It's just a question of whether we want to receive students.
Correct. Yes. And it's just as though they would be choosing to go to maybe a private school or wherever they go. Yes.
$5,000 doesn't sound like a lot of money. I know. No comments. Our thoughts remain. I stick to court.
Thank you. Ms. Luskey, do you have any?
It just seems like financially, it does not seem like it works in our paper right now, even though I think, you know, it continuing to revisit it each year, it seems like the right thing to do and if there is an opportunity at some point to open the doors wider, great. I don't think that's the time.
Okay. Yes, I mean, our per pupil expenditure is 20, what, 8,000, 20?
Yeah, it's about 24,000.
24,000. So obviously makes zero financial sense. And I don't, I have concerns in terms of infrastructure and being overburdened with an influx of students that we weren't necessarily anticipating, especially in light of the decisions we just had to make as we confronted the fiscal crisis. So I think it would be, it may be something that may warrant more serious discussion in the future, but to me, I think it would be it may be setting us up for failure if we, if we, if we change the course at this point. That's my, my personal perspective. Now, we've opened this up at a couple minutes late at 5:47, but we were slated to continue till 6:00. So I just want to provide everyone an opportunity to comment that may or may not be tuning in virtually. There's no one here in person, but I'll just repeat what this is. If you're just tuning in now in anticipation of the regular meeting and you've happened upon this hearing here, what we're, we're in the middle of a public hearing on school choice, which is a program that would allow added district students to attend Cohasset Public Schools. Cohasset students can already take advantage of school choice for any participating districts. We are not currently a participating district. And so this is just the annual vote that we're required to take to determine whether or not we want to opt into that program. If you have any thoughts on that, feel free to generate them using the Q and A feature on Zoom. Otherwise, I'll just probably mute us unless anyone has any other comments to share. I'll just probably mute us for the next few minutes until I hear, see any comments. And if not, then at 5:59, we'll come back on and take a vote. I want to take the vote before we give it everyone a full chance to be heard.
And actually, I think the vote is on the regular agenda.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Yep.
You know, I do that every single time.
This is just the hearing and then you'll vote towards the end of the actual meeting.
I do it every time with the vote this year.
And you don't have any attendees.
One day I'll learn.
Well, they might be waiting patiently late coming at 5:47, drop a bomb on us on some incredible comment.
Well, yeah, but it's, 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 it's streaming on, this part is streaming on Facebook as well. So people could be watching and deciding if they want to log into the comments. Who knows? So we'll just give it a few minutes, but so I'm just gonna.
I would just say, if someone is doing that, if they could log in and make a comment just to make the five, the next five minutes less awkward. Those are just kind of sitting here.
Looking at you.
Yeah. Anything? No?
No. We're just gonna mute and we'll, we'll sort of await.
Can't, can't we?
Yeah. Yeah, we're not gonna talk. It's just like, you know. Go ahead. Okay, just coming back online here. Give a few extra minutes to allow for virtual participants to comment on the school choice issue, and we did not receive any comments or questions, and there's no one in person. So at this time, oh, I'm sorry, we're not voting. We're gonna vote during the regular meeting. So at this point, I just asked for a motion to adjourn the public hearing on school choice so we can start the school committee meeting.
So moved.
Which has been made by Mr. Dial. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Luskey. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries by a vote of three members. So public hearing on school choice is adjourned, and we will in one minute. Start the school committee meeting. Probably less than a minute. It's 6:00 PM, so welcome everyone to the April 16, 2025 meeting of the Cohasset School Committee. For all members who are present, please indicate so. And roll call. Mr. Carr is not present. Mr. Dial?
Present.
Mrs. Hannah is not present. Mrs. Luskey?
Present.
Chair is present. That gives us a majority quorum of three members. So I will call the meeting, formally call the meeting to order at this time and ask all those who are able to please rise for recitation of our nation's pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Very much, everyone. Just reminding everyone that this meeting is being broadcast on Cohasset 143 TV. It's being live streamed on Facebook, and you can participate virtually by logging on to Zoom through the link that appears at top of our agenda, which was mailed to, emailed to all school family members and can be obtained through the Cohasset Town website. We'll move into the first agenda item as always, which is public comment. This is the section of our agenda that is reserved for community members to provide thoughts or perspective or discussion points on something that's not related to the agenda. And while we will try our best to succinctly respond, we can't oftentimes discuss any of these at length, but they are always something that these comments are something that could lead to future agenda items. So if you have a thought or a discussion point related to something that's not on tonight's agenda, please feel free to utilize the Q and A feature on Zoom or raise your hand if you're in the audience. And please just identify yourself using your full name and your residential address. I would be happy to hear from you. If you have something that's related to a topic that's already on the agenda, then just hang on to that thought until we arrive at that point in the meeting. I would be more than happy to hear from you. Give everyone at home a few moments to generate any sort of questions they might have. Doesn't look like any of our person participants make public comment tonight. Welcome, though. Okay, seeing that, we'll move right into the next agenda block, which is our superintendent updates. And at this moment, I would, excuse me, I'm so sorry. It's not the next block agenda. The next block agenda is our, I guess, how could I forget? Looking forward to this, to hear food service update from our director of food services, Mr. Benicio Cordon. Mr. Cordon, feel free to come on up to the front table here and present at will. Thank you for being here tonight.
My pleasure. Thank you so much for having me.
Of course.
It's been a while.
It has.
Do you want me to start, Tim?
Yes, please.
Okay.
So I prepared a little slide of some updates that have taken place. It would always be my wish and my want that, you know, whenever I could, to visit this space and a picture sure is worth a thousand words, but to see it live and happening, it's a considerable, so. Yeah. So the next one. Some of these things, for my first presentation to you all, you might remember that was into the future. Well, this is the future. This is now. And so we, we finally, we configured the disturbing lines at each elementary school and somewhat at the high school within with the limitations of the space in the high school, but nonetheless, we changed some things there, too. We acquired citrus squeezing freshly made orange juice machines, which are now working at least once a week, but sometimes it's twice a week. The new equipment that has allows to sort of expedite the way in which the students grab their lunches if they don't wanna if the hot lunch is not their choice for the day, they, they're able to go through this new merchandiser, grab and go and just grab their milk, their juice and their salads and anything else that they may want. It gives them a, a chance to, to get back to the to the dining area of the space as opposed to us wait around to get a salad when there is no need for that. So so that is already something happening at all three buildings. Sarah? One of the things that we have, we have implemented and you know, my first, my first thought on this is that I apologize to the community because I wanted to do this so badly from day one, but, but we can only learn how to crawl, walk and then run, right? So it took a bit of sort of coming together with a recipe and in a way that that we can really entrust somebody within the staff to be able to provide homemade muffins. And this is, this is happening in all three buildings twice a week now. The flavors that I have chosen for them to have becomes controversial a little bit, but but we have to serve fruit. So they can have chocolate chips on the weekends. I will say that the, the muffins are, are good. But what is even better is that the person that I sort of trained to make them makes a better batter than I do. And that is, that is most likely because baking is not my thing, you know, it's, it's an exact science and you need to be in the moment. It's like, you know, there's no such a thing as cooking the books. There certainly is no shortcuts to baking. So Rosalind is a staff member that puts together the mix twice a week and then we send that over to the, to the schools and they are baked in the kitchen. So. I'm not that photogenic or anything else for that matter, but this is the machine. And, and the orange are freshly squeezed. They're, they're going to hopper on top and it's kind of fun to see. And the kids get a kick out of it. Not everybody gets to see it because it will, it will, they will never make it to the classroom. And so, and sometimes we do allow them to sort of grab their own juice. You know, they have to let go of the spout and, and pull the cup away or else they will continue to make juice, but, but it's delicious. And again, one item, oranges. On a side note about this, we, as participants of the National School Launch Program, there are, I'll speak about this later, but now that I'm looking at this, it's important to know that sometimes, you know, there's a lot of there are a lot of stuff that is being said, say about produce fruits and vegetables. We participate on something that is called the Department of Defense Fruits and Vegetables Grant. And this is this is put together by, by the USDA and the federal government. And as long as we buy everything that is grown within the United States, we can buy anything we want. Right now, we're getting strawberries from California and oranges year round from Florida. And so it costs us nothing to give these kiddos a five to six ounce cup of juice at least once a week. So it's, so it's a, it's a good deal. And I'll talk about that grant later on in the slides, but I just wanted to make sure that we're not, we're not spending that much money for, for really good product. It's basically free. So these are the grabbing goes, merchandisers that I was talking about earlier. There are little labels there and it gives them, it gives, this is both beer healing and in Osgood, all of the stuff is within the rich juices, fruits, already made sandwiches, salads, fruit is. So, so we are able to provide this at a much faster rate than they were doing before. They would have to wait in the hotline to go all the way through and then grab their cold lunches. That's no longer the case now. Ideally, it should work, right? But the reality is that if two bodies are waiting for lunch, you know, one was cold and the other one was hot, well, guess what? That cold lunch person is not, a student is not gonna go to the grabbing go. It's gonna wait for the body to grab that. And that's fine. That's part of socializing, but the opportunity is there to speed up the to speed up the service. The middle school and high school. Now, this one was the biggest lift for both equipment in terms of training. We are doing something that is, is, I call it the mothership, but this is, everything more or less is brought into the high school and then shipped out to the other two buildings for them to finalize the product. One of those items that, you know, since my arrival here, Taco Tuesdays or Burrito Bowl Tuesdays, we are getting raw meat and we're cooking it ourselves here in the high school. And our cooks over at the elementaries are quite able to do this themselves, but I do want to have certain control over the taste and the ingredients that go into this. Because, you know, it's very easy to just start adding things that don't belong. And so at least it's uniform. The kid that is having that burrito bowl at the high school, middle school is sharing the same experience over at the other schools. And so that's the reason for us to do that. So we, we do have to sort of control that piece of it. Maybe we can change it eventually, but for right now, it's, it's a comfort zone for me to know that who is making certain items and I can always go back to them if something were to not be right. We talked about back when about a pizza station. This has has become the most successful thing that the program has on the bacon. And I don't blame them. It's delicious. I also have to give a flower for a bit because I was hitting a slice a day. And so it's just, it's, it's not good for me. Everybody else, sure, but so we are averaging 38 pizzas in the middle in high school. That's just a little bit over 300 slices. And kids are loving it. And it's very, very good product. Those of you that have had it can corroborate that, you know, and so it's, it's really good. Finally, this year, I have been able to open up the senior café, so it gives them an opportunity to not be part of those funnel effect over there at the high school, middle school kitchen where everybody comes in at the same time from the high school, right? So now the seniors tend to stand over in that area and we serve them with a little bit more freedom and, and faster. Of course, they have their favorites, too. They're always got overs, you know. Oriental chicken on Mondays, I could not get rid of that because it's just something that they enjoy. And so why shouldn't they have one meal that they like? So we've worked around that. Brown jasmine rice and, and steamed broccoli. It meets a requirement from the USDA. So. So this is, this is basically the mess that the pizza station has become. That rack on your left is, is what holds the actual rolled up dough. We sauce, cheese, and sometimes when there is time, we put some, some toppings on it. And then it goes into an oven. It's a double deck oven. It only does on each side, each side of time, three and a half minutes for cheese, four, four minutes and 25 seconds for any other one with topping. It, it has a technology that I, I have never known about this, but it is, it, it works. It cooks at 500 degrees and it shakes the bottom of the, of the screen and that's what makes the makes the magic on the crust. It's, it's the way in which it is cooked on the bottom and it's even canceled. So it's, it's a unit that I'm told that is over at, at Tengue Park. This is the product. It looks as artisanal as it gets. The only thing that you'd be missing is a little bit of wood tasting, if you will, you know, for something that was made perhaps on a, on an old fashioned oven, but and the stuff really gets a kick out of it. There's currently of the 11 of them, there are three that are well trained to do this. So that's always something that is very important to me to have cross training so they're able to do the job. So towards the end of, of the season last year, summer, we finalized that middle school garden and Holy Hills Farm was able to plant some things. I was able to use some of that in the salad bar. And so I'm really looking forward to this year, getting started from the beginning. We had a couple of meetings already and it will be really good. I talked about preserving things, handling things, right? There was always not refrigeration available, so we are able to do some things when, when the bounty starts coming in online. So I'm really looking forward to that garden, getting, getting a fresh start this year. It looks phenomenal. They have to add a little bit more mulch, but but it's really a nice, a nice, nice view from, from the dining room in the, in the middle school. So this is an example of what we're doing. Now, the salad station in the middle in high school, it's a little bit more of, we're able to do this because of the age group, basically, right? So, but all of these items are available in a little box or a, or salad that is made in the morning of, at the elementary levels. I'm really looking forward to, in a way in which we can both help them be able to make these choices for themselves at a much younger age. But I, I feel that at this moment in time, it's a little bit a, a heavy ask to ask when they only have like 20 minutes to, to make a lunch and keep going. And not only that, but then there's the hygiene aspect of it, you know, where we want to make sure even even in grownups parties, I guess, it's a pet peeve of mine. You also know there's a quiz, it happens again. There's now serving food and people grab with their hands when the barrel tongs is right in front of them. It, it's just, it's just like, let me help you with this. And it happens quite a bit, more often than you care to know. And it's just like, I don't know where your hand has been. So anyways, if it happens with adults, then that is, that is the, the kiddo part of it, too, right? But the burrito bowl is well accepted. We have all these toppings. It, 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 it's there are some national brands out there that put a product like this and for maybe three times the amount of money that we are currently selling this for and the kids love it. So this, this, this apparatus here, this was the heaviest lift of the, of the improvement that we made to the kitchen. Now, it doesn't look like much, or maybe it does look like a spacecraft, but I would like you all to know that we have four ovens in the kitchen. They had gone that is relevant. We don't use them anymore. We haven't turned them on at all. This machine is able to make and then some what those four ovens were able to do. So that will open up more space in the kitchen for when the time comes. But this is the oven that cooks everything. It cooks dry heat combination. That's why it's called a combi oven. And it also just steams things if you want them to you, to, to do with steam food. So anyways, thank you. Thank you for, for getting that machine because it just has made a tremendous amount of difference. It cooks in a third of the time. And it also is smart. For instance, last night, I left two racks worth of, of fresh pork in there with the seasoning and you put it on the slow mode. When the cook came in this morning, it was done, but it kept it at a safe tem, at a safe temperature. You pull it out, you pull it right away and then you're able to put it away and reuse for something. So it's even working when you're not here. So, and I don't need another app on my phone, but you can also download an app and, and control it from, from your phone. So. I put this as a reminder. It's important not to lose, not to lose sight of, of what we are. And to become, to be part of the National School Launch Program. I, I still feel questions and, and there is nothing wrong with that, right? Because what we don't know, we don't know, but there is this lack of understanding of why is a meal free? And why isn't it free at some times? And when it's missing the one component, which is a fruit or a vegetable, we cannot legally say, yeah, go ahead. Because even when we get ordered that somebody from there, he will be standing next to the kitchen and says, oh, that tray didn't have fruit. And you let it go without saying anything. Oh, that didn't happen. And then they make us an estimate. They are able to take that money away from you based on what they think, the percentage of trays that go high. So it's important that both the consumers and us as workers understand that we always need to see a fruit or a vegetable in there. They don't have to eat it. We're not a fruit or vegetable police, but we do need to make sure that it is present. Not only that, but in our, our kitchens currently, I offer at least four different types of fruits and two different types of vegetables at any time. So there are choices. You don't like strawberries. You don't like an apple. You don't like a mandarin orange. Who doesn't? So there, there are all these things that we have available to them. The only thing that I can get that I cannot have at Osgood are grapes because of a choke hazard, right? The only thing that I can get, that I cannot have at Rosewood are grapes because of a choke, choke hazard, right? So, so if you hear that sometimes, oh, they have grapes and I don't have grapes, it, it might have been at Rosewood and so this is the only reason for that. So, uh, but yeah, a fruit or a vegetable must be present on the tray in order for us to go to Uncle Sam and says, please reimburse me for that lunch. Uh, this is, this is, uh, this is the information that is put out around August every year. And on this one here, I can't read the number, so I pulled it down somewhere. It's four dollars and fifty-eight cents. A year ago, the year prior was four dollars and thirty-one cents for lunch. It's a pretty good deal. And to make money off of that, to be profitable, uh, it's even that much harder. But if it is done properly, it's dual. But we need to make one change, uh, as a district. We, we, we are not needing one of the regs and that is that if the USDA, federal government and the state are able to give us four dollars and fifty-eight cents per lunch, then we have to charge at least that for that extra meal. If, and right now we're doing two fifty or two seventy-five, two seventy-five, I think. So we are below the average of what a meal costs. So we need to change that. I don't know what the mechanism in this district is for that. School committee and, and leadership, but, uh, that needs, that needs to be met. Because it will be a finding from, from Desi. So this document is put out all the time. It gets a little confusing and a little bit into the weeds in there because free is one price, reduced is another, paid is another. They always are giving you a reimbursement portion of it, uh, to make it work. So it's not a straight up four fifty-eight or two thirty-eight for, for the, for the breakfast, is it? Is it two thirty-eight?
Two thirty-seven.
Two thirty-seven, okay. So, and, I mean, let's not, let's bring the muffin for instance for breakfast. I mean, about it. Two weeks ago, I was paying a dollar an egg here and we are using fresh eggs for the muffin mix. So it got, it has become a little bit sort of, um, even for us, it becomes an issue, uh, cost-wise. Because by the time we pay for that egg, which is a third of a muffin, well, you see what I'm getting at. So it's, it gets sort of challenging. But there is, there are some things that we can do to improve the financial aspect of this. I don't think we're in trouble, but, but I think that we could be better. By meeting regulations. Uh, this is just a small example of, um, I started talking earlier about the USDA has three different, uh, grants for food services. The Brumbox, the Department of Defense, uh, vegetable, and then there is something that, that you could actually donate when, when you don't have the staff, the knowledge, the equipment, the time. You can actually grab all that unprocessed food, uh, chickens, rambid, pork, and give it to, to processing companies. So they take it from you, from the USDA, but, but whatever is awarded to you, whatever you said you want to give back to them. And then you get to buy them, buy it back from them as a discount. Uh, I did that one year a long time ago and then I started changing things around because we had the knowledge, the time and the equipment to just process it ourselves. So we don't need to, to buy bread or chicken when, if we had to, we can make it ourselves. We don't need to grab, you know, cooked up taco meat when we can cook it ourselves. So there is a savings on that. So, um, the Department of Defense too is, is the other one. And all of these numbers are pulled from participation in any district. The more kids buy from you, the more they give you. And this goes to, uh, goes to show you more or less, um, it's a year behind, right? So the twenty-fourth would be twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five and currently the twenty-twenty-six, which is what I have coming in for next year. And it has gone up as participation increases. And it has gone up even though we were in the enrollment. We are out nine people, nine students less in the twenty-four versus twenty-five. I don't know what the enrollment is going to be for the following year, but, uh, but we are on an upward trend still. A hundred and twenty-six thousand, almost a hundred and twenty-seven thousand lunches versus a hundred and nine lunches today. Now that's another thirty thousand doll, thirty thousand lunches that would be sold between yesterday, which that number was pulled from, and the end of the school year. So, so it still is, is on the, on the, um, on the up. What is more encouraging for me personally, and as a business person sometimes, I guess, is the extra lunches that we are selling. In the first, my first year here, we had nine thousand two hundred and thirty-three extra lunches. District one. And today, as of yesterday, we are close to ten thousand with two and a half months, two months to go. So it still is on the uptrend. Now you multiply that by, by what we should be charging versus what we are charging, it's a big difference. And, uh, and that's basically it. The other piece that I would like to say is that the pizza as a meal or as an extra slice, which I give them a break, students, I charge my dollar fifty when they don't have another milk, another fruit, another anything. It's just an extra slice of pizza, which I charge a dollar fifty. It is the highest grossing lunch item that we sell. It, it's just profitable and, and it's, it's moving fast, it's really good. And, uh, and it meets the requirements with the, with the fruits and vegetables. A cup of, a quarter cup of tomato sauce goes into a slice of pizza. And then the other, the protein and the cheese makes up the difference and so. That's it. I don't know if anybody has any questions or, or clarification on anything.
Thank you so much for that wonderful presentation, Mr. Cordone. Are there any questions from the communities around the board as well?
Thank you for the update, that's great. You've done yeoman's work getting this food service up to par and exceeding par. And I can, I can report that I have picky eaters who would not have thought of even, um, having school lunch. And now my younger one enjoys several days of school lunches as opposed to zero days of school lunches. My older one, however, is stuck in the habit of wheat thins and, um, and mozzarella balls. But that's, that's a, that's something. So I, I've, I've done, have we thought about branching out into selling pizza to the community?
I have, I have brought up, I have brought up that idea, uh, on, on different levels. I actually meant to say, no, I'm sorry, I, I, the elementary school, two weekends now, two weeks now and starting the third week coming up, have had the, the, the high school, middle school pizza now too. We are rolling out the pizza inside. We don't have that fancy oven there because it's, it won't, it won't make financial sense. But we do have ovens where that gets cooked on and it's not quite there. It's a little chewier, not as crispy, but, but it makes, so the elementaries, both, both buildings are now enjoying the pizza that we're making in the high school.
That's great.
So yes, I mean, uh, I, I think it would be a great, a great opportunity to, um, to, if we can make that work, you know? I think that the community should come in, pick a day and, and we, we'll, we'll go all out and, and, uh, and have.
Well, I can, I can also report that the, um, basketball showdown at here at, at recently, the, um, the food was, was a hit, so.
Yeah, yeah.
It was, it was well done, so thank you for all the work you've cleared, done.
I have a great department behind me and, and they, they work really hard and they're really proud of it. And they, there is a level and sense of ownership now of what they're doing because they can see that that is good, good is good. You're welcome, thank you.
Mr. Dial, um, just note that Hannah, um, appeared at six twenty-six. Welcome, Hannah, giving us a panel of forum members now. Uh, Hannah, you go for not present for the presentation, but it's related to food service. I don't know if you have any questions whatsoever about food service generally or any comments or anything like that?
No, I had the pleasure. So thank you for all the work you've done. And I also heard, well, I witnessed the Whiz Kid Night service, so it was awesome. Thank you for raving about that, so.
Hannah, Ms. Leslie?
Thank you, um, thank you for all you're doing for our students. Full bellies, let's eat food, learn better. Um, I think that's, that's real science. So I think what you're doing is just incredible and also opening their palates, um, to different foods, to healthier foods, because it's so pretty when you walk through those cafeterias. Everything's packaged nicely, it's easy to access, um, the food just looks great. Um, and it tastes good too. That's what I hear at home, the muffins. I, I've had a muffin, they're delicious, but my children, when they're having difficult mornings, shall we say, I say, please get something in cafeteria anyway and, and then I ask when they get home and it's always, I got a muffin, they're so good. So thank you for that. And one thing in your, your presentation that I just wanted to comment on is the way in which you've been working with your staff and developing your staff. And I just really appreciate that you're giving professional development opportunities to your staff, making this a great place to, to work and to learn, um, for our, our people who work in the cafeteria and for your staff. Because I think consistency there is also going to make your job easier.
Absolutely.
And improve the product overall. And so I just really appreciate your attention, just sort of like, not just getting food onto trays for kids, but how to run, um, a department class, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Celeste. Just two quick things, Mr. Cordone, uh, thank you so much for that again. With regards to the price for the second lunches, I don't think that we need to vote on that. I think that probably the best way to, to do that is just a suggestion. It's, it's operational and you're the director, so I leave it to you and, and Ms. Owen in terms of how to do this. But I think rolling something like that out, just maybe a little bit advanced notice to the families that there's, there's being, there's going to be a shift and, and a reasoning behind it. And then it should happen because, um, as we know, we are just coming, emerging from a fiscal crisis. This is another one of these hidden, um, revenue opportunities that's actually required. So it's not even a choice where, where, um, we need to course correct on that and, and it'll be to our financial benefit. So please just work that out however. I just think it would be nice to give a little bit, I don't think it has to be, you know, substantial, just some reasonable amount of time for families to understand that that's going to be happening.
Right.
Then my only question is, and so you took us to, uh, what was the future during your last presentation? Here we are in the current state of affairs of food service, which is excellent. I'm wondering, as we look forward, uh, have you considered implementing any, uh, learning opportunities in terms of culinary arts? I know this is something that you wanted to do. I remember when you were speaking about it when you were interviewing for the position. So there's two parts to this. I, I feel like there's opportunities for, um, enrich, enrichment opportunities for the kids. And I think that, like cooking class or something like that. And then I also think that, uh, there's an opportunity here for a really, fulfilling community night where we have like a restaurant night where the kids can take part in sort of showcasing some of the stuff they learned how to make, make. And, you know, they can act as waiters, they can act, you know, obviously it was take a, a deal of planning. It's something we can roll out overnight, just a thought with family comes out. Just, we're just coming out of that mosaic event we had recently, uh, which you were at, I saw you at. And I think that is really well received by the community. This could be something similar where, um, I think a lot of people would anticipate. So just wondering if, uh, you've had your hands full, you've only been here for, this is your first full school year that you've been here. So not, not looking for the moon, you know, you know, right out of the gates. But have you thought about any of that?
So, so yes, I have. Uh, I'll address the first piece there about the increase of the second lunch. Uh, I will, I will meet with, uh, with my boss about this. So I brought it up, um, a bit ago, not that long, but, but anyways, I think that, um, I don't think the numbers are going to look that, that bad where I, if, 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 if it's allowed and if, if it makes it better, I, I subscribe to the school thought of like, you know, uh, like doing a break or, or maybe, maybe roll it out the next year. Cause we already did it this, this year is almost already gone. And so, you know, I, I have no problems telling Desi my bad if, if this ever came to. But then we can just start fresh the first of the next school year.
That sounds great.
And that way we have the whole summer family has something and there is more communication to post on about.
Yeah, just make sure there is.
Absolutely. To the second piece of that, um, yes, um, always, uh, thinking of ways in which can, um, my, my one conversation with my staff has always been that, you know, we all know we can cook at home or otherwise, right? And, and it's like, but, but we have to gain the trust of those that are going to be joining us for a set meal. In this case, it's the students. And so we had to start slow because, you know, who hasn't had a bad meal living at a restaurant, right? And so, so we just had to make sure that we standardize recipes, ways in which we make things and, and move it along. And the school, uh, wellness meeting about two or three months ago, we, we had that conversation where I, well, I was glad to hear that the students says, one of the things that interested them most was food service. We never followed through with, with, with that, uh, because a lot of things just sort of happened. But I, I think it's very important that they know where things come from and what does it take, you know, rather than like, oh, you don't have Chinese food today or, you know, like, well, there is a reason for that. Or, you know, how things come together. And I think that there was an appetite from the, from the student, student body. It seemed to me that they wanted to be part of that and we'd be more than happy to sort of bring them on and, you know, just make it happen, just, there is a business lesson to be learned there, there is a life skill that is so important because, you know, who, who doesn't want to cook their own meal and impress whomever, right? And I mean, I think that there is a lot there to, uh, to take on and, and I'd be more than happy to participate as much as, 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 as you guys want me to. I mean, I think it, I think it would be great. I think that I talked about this too, that, that I think that the farmer's market, I think that food service should, co-hazard food service should have a presence of that, just so that the people get to see this, you know? And, and, and just, uh, just recently, because a case of pickles was, uh, of, of cucumbers was going bad on us. And, and so they didn't know how to pickle things. And so I had a moment and I pickled some, some cucumbers, right? And it's almost like, they were pretty good. I didn't have all the spices with me, but they were pretty good, they were decent. And so the thing of it is that there are so many things that, you know, you just aren't thinking of, of it all the time, but then it comes to you, when the need arises, then you're just like, oh, you know, by the way, you know? So that's why the garden is very important to me because I, I'm, I'm, I'm so looking forward to see what we can get out of there. You know, and, and there was a concern, uh, from a meeting we had that, you know, well, what's going to happen is in the summer, it's a growing season. Where we can can things, we can pickle things, we can dry things and so forth. That oven that, that, that we now have dehydrates things too. And so there are many ways in which we can just prolong the season of our harvest. And, uh, and, and the garden is going to be fantastic. Long answer to your question, yes, I love the opportunity to help out in any way.
Great, well, thank you. I think this presentation certainly inspired a lot of confidence in our food services department. I don't see any, uh, questions from anyone participating virtually. Don't see any hand raised in the audience, so thank you so much for, uh, your time and for all that you do for our students, our community.
And the staff is quite happy to be here, they all are looking forward to the next day, you know, inspiring me.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all, thank you.
Moving right along into the superintendent's update, uh, turn the meeting over to our superintendent of schools, Sarah Shan.
Thank you. So somebody mentioned Mosaic when, um, Mr. Cordone was speaking. And I just wanted, I know I spoke about it in front of people the last time we were here, but I just want to, um, share, it was my first Mosaic event. And if people haven't been coming to Mosaic, it is an event that everybody needs to come to. It was so fun, so joyful, um, and so filling. As we're talking about food, there was food from all around the world. And I think it's easy to think of co-hazard as a place that doesn't have a lot of diversity. And what happened in the gym during that event was a celebration of all of the diversity that does exist within co-hazard and the different cultures that our families have. And the foods that we eat and the clothes that we wear and the everything from, you know, people had tables that just represented where their family's heritages are from. And it was a wonderful night. We had, um, people from an Irish dance studio and they, students came and, you know, little litty biddies coming and doing some Irish dance to older students doing Irish dance. We brought in the step team from the middle school in Canton and they performed. And it was just an awesome event. And so I would highly encourage when the date comes out next year, everybody should put it on their calendars because it's great. And as we continue to grow, we'll all just make more. And so you know, Mr. Cordone made empanadas and he was next to me. And I had brought my food and his food went quickly and everybody wanted his food. And I was like, I don't know why I'm standing here because I can't compete with, with what he makes. But, um, just a huge shout out to the committee that made Mosaic what it was. So Alyssa, Alyssa Gittens-Carl, Jenna Bluen, Garrus Bell-McDonna, Hilda Leo and Ashley Colery. They did a lot of work to pull that night off. And, um, anyone who's interested in being a part of the committee, I'm sure they would happily accept you. So, um, the other thing that happened last week is Dr. Elizabeth Englander was here. She is. the other thing that happened last week is Dr. Elizabeth Englander was here. She is a professor at Mark, at Bridgewater State College. Mark is the Massachusetts Aggression Reduction Center. And she has been doing work researching students for as long as I think I've been in education. She started by really focusing on bullying and she has shifted gears to looking at technology and technology use, especially among adolescents. And so the middle school PSO sponsored her visit. And it was a really nice follow-up to the work that's been happening around the interest generation. And what I really like about her is that she provides really solid research along with concrete strategies that families can go home and implement that night. And she has a real no nonsense approach to technology. She's not all or nothing. She really believes in monitoring your student use. And she also really emphasizes that at all times, we as adults are modeling our technology use for our children and that as we continue to monitor their use, we should be monitoring our own use. And so thank you to the PSO for, at the middle school for bringing her in. Couple MSBA updates, our statements of interest for the middle school and the high school have been submitted. So now we are in sort of this waiting to see what the MSBA has to say, but hopefully we'll hear something along the way. The deadline for them to let us know is December. So it's a, it's a long, it's a long way between now and then. We also, Ms. Owen and Nick Farady from facilities had our first meeting with the owner's project manager and the designer who'll be doing the Osford roof. We're in the feasibility study and schematic design phase of that project. And that meeting went really well. We have our contracts signed with them and we are anticipating that between now and the summer, they're going to be doing their work with the intended start date for a project being summer of 2026. So not this summer, but the following summer. Another thing that happened last week that was really great, that was my first opportunity to see was Credit for Life. And so it was a, well, we had the meeting where Senator O'Connor, Ms. Sheena were here. We talked about financial literacy for students. And this was a really great opportunity to see students learning financial literacy in the moment. It is an event that's held for seniors. It is grant, partially grant funded through the state. And Ms. Fitzgerald, Nicole Fitzgerald, who's a teacher at the high school in the math department, runs it. And we bring in parents and folks from Rockland Trust who also support the program and other teachers and students get all dressed up. And they pick a profession based on what they think their interest is and they're given salary. And then they have to go around and they have to decide what they want for housing and what they want for transportation and what they, how much they're going to spend on food. And they have to figure out if that's my salary for a year, how am I going to live? And what are the choices I'm going to make? Do I buy the fancy sports car or do I buy the used car that's already depreciated that gives me a lower monthly payment? And then they sit down and they figure it out and they do their, you know, checks and balances. And they decide, did I, did I make it or am I going to be in debt? And I just think the kids had a really good time doing it, but they were really learning and they were incredibly invested in the decisions that they were making. And so I think that as our students go off to college, it's a really good time for them to think about what a budget looks like and how they're going to make it work. Because once they're independent and free, they start to make their own decisions and sometimes it works out and sometimes it doesn't. So the more we can teach them about financial literacy, the better. Today was SAT day at the high school. This is the second time this year we've done this. It's something new that the high school is doing. And it's been really, really well received for students to be able to actually take the SATs during the school day at school. I can tell you my own son has done it twice now this year and it's very great. So that's something we will continue. And I think almost every junior participated today. And then finally also mentioned, just a shout out again to the full co-hasset PSO for bringing the wizards to town. That was also a really fun community event. There were smiles and joy and laughter and the patience of the wizards while they were playing basketball with teachers who are not sure really know how to play basketball, but they have a lot of energy and excitement for the event. And so it was a great night as a co-hasset community. So thank you to the PSO for doing that. Those are all my updates. And then I have another item.
Yeah, let's move right into this.
Okay. So as most people know, we are members of South Shore Educational Collaborative. It is a collaborative for special education. It is a school in which some of our co-hasset resident students are attending as out of district placements. And as part of that membership, we are, we have one seat on their board. And so every year by May 15th, we have to vote about who will be the appointed representative to the board. And in the past years, the appointed rep has been a superintendent. I have been attending this year. And so if that's something you're, you're interested in continuing, you would need to just vote this evening. And I'm happy to continue to serve in that role.
Okay. Thank you for that introduction. If there's any discussion, just speak. You're going to be called on. Otherwise I will seek a motion to nominate or approve our superintendent of schools. Is there any discussion? Just to make sure. Discuss it all. No, okay. Motion, motion made by Mr. Leslie, seconded by Mrs. Hannah on favor. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Sentience. Motion carries by majority vote of four members of superintendent chain. So thank you so much for your willingness to serve on that board. That concludes superintendent's report, I believe. Correct?
Yep.
All right. So we'll move right into the teaching and learning section. Turn the meeting over to our assistant superintendent of schools, Dr. Leslie Scollins, to present a few things to the committee.
And I have Sir Rock Roberts.
Yes.
Director.
Sorry, Mr. Roberts.
To give my voice to Mr. Stapleton, not with us, he's actually doing interviews. So he's not here, but he is also.
He's interviewing for our elementary team chair, correct?
Correct. So he could not join. He's absolutely a part of this. So, so we are at the end of our first year of a three year of our student opportunity act. There we go. Just a quick overview. The student opportunity act or SOA made here was enacted in the state of Massachusetts in 2019. And the purpose of it is to reduce the achievement gap and to look at specific subgroups and target them to reduce that gap. And through doing that and creating a plan, a three-year plan, we use evidence-based practices to hopefully reduce that gap. And so last year we had to write a new, a new SOA. And so that is from 24 to 27. And we chose to reduce reading and math achievement gaps for students with disabilities. Our previous ones also around reducing that for reading. And so our plan expanded a bit. And in the past, we were targeting Osgood, but now we are looking at Osmond Deer Hill and the middle school. And looking at evidence-based interventions for math and literacy and looking at how do we refine our systems using data to inform our teaching and learning. And Ross has been instrumental in a lot of that and building up our data dashboards and having conversations around data. And then looking at our MTSS, our multi-tiered systems of support and continue to approve upon the process with the district and building base data teams. And, you know, we spent a lot of time aligning the forms and kind of process. Now we're still continuing to evolve that process. And we've expanded co-teaching into grades three and five. So now we're K through 12, what we have, excuse me, our co-teaching.
So in terms of, we kind of broke this presentation up to the ELA math component. So in terms of actions taken in ELA or literacy, we've done a lot of professional development literacy for both general and special education. Teachers moved the co-teaching through grades three and five. So that's happening now. We've continued to, and trained special education teachers in Wilson Reading for tiered two and three interventions. And this year as part of our regular kind of review process, we initiated the first phase of the ELA curriculum review, which we are in our final stages. In terms of math, we've done a lot of work with data in math and with our math specialists and with our teachers. Really looking at key concepts and skills for interventions of targeting certain problems students were having. And also conversations around aligning intervention strategies. And this has been more specific to mass specialists, looking at, you know, when students are moving from Osgood to Deer Hill, what difficulties, difficulties are students presenting when they get there? Is there a way that we can get ahead of that? So there have been a lot of conversations around that. And then just looking at our disconnects and our gaps. So where are things breaking down? The data is early because we, we basically submitted our SOA plan a little bit more than a year ago. So we had last year's MCAS data, but that was pre-planned. But still we had some numbers there and our iReady data, really we have from the fall into the winter. So I take this data with a grain of salt because I think we need a really another year, another MCAS year, a full year of iReady data. Because when you're looking from fall to winter in iReady, you might show a big increase because you get summer slides and stuff. So it's better to look at one year to the next fall, the fall, winter to winter. Things like that. And we're also kind of following, you know, one grade. So but we have shown some, some movement in terms of MCAS, grade three in 2024. Our students with disability scored 16 points, 16 percentage points higher than the previous year in ELA and 12% higher in math. That said, every one of our grades is a different group of students. So it's kind of apples to oranges, looking at a third grade in 2023 and 2024. So like I said, taking it with a grain of salt, but it's anytime the numbers are moving up. You know, we, we embrace that. Our iReady reading data shows an average of 12% increase for students with disabilities scoring at or above grade levels. And that's from kind of the fall to the winter. And that's grades one through eight. We don't have the information for K because our window was late. It was kind of in between fall and winter because we give our kindergarten students some time to kind of acclimate before we start giving them the benchmark testing. In math, we showed, showed a 4% increase in for students with disabilities scoring above or at grade level. We have noticed that we seem to be increasing or making larger increases in literacy and not matching where math are, all our students are moving at a significant pace. We're getting large increases. But that gap with students with disability seems to be remaining kind of stagnant. So that's something, that's one of those gaps that we want to look at and kind of explore why that's happening. On Dibbles, just to get kind of that early literacy read for grades one and two, we were 11 point, 11 percentage points higher from fall to winter with students scoring core or above. So that would be grade level or beyond grade level. In terms of next steps, continuing moving with our plan, we're going to explore pilot implement tier one, tier two intervention programs. We're going to be investigating and looking at tier three math intervention programs. Continuing to provide the professional, yes, continuing to provide professional development for all staff around interventions. What's tier one look like in a classroom, tier two, tier three? Coaching for our specialists, our specialized teachers. And we're going to continue to work with our process for MTSS, which is also been connected to the the specialty task force that Mr. Stapleton has been kind of heading.
That's it?
That's our, that's our update. Okay. Thank you for that update. Are there any, and I just remind anyone that's watching, you can utilize the Q and A feature on the Zoom to share your thoughts or ask any questions. I'll be periodically looking at that. Are there any questions from I see members of our special education parent advisory council in the room? Are there any questions from any of you relative to the presentation?
Yes. Yes, sir. Excuse me.
Wait, could you just state your name and residential address? It's for the.
Stephanie Saunders, Thames Stratford Terrace. Hi, everybody. I do want to first thank the current administration and leadership for, I think, really clarifying and recognizing that special education and things like out of district placements are a right of students and not something to consider when we're looking at budgets in that way. Really appreciate hearing that consistently. I think some concerns I have are about the current reading curriculum, especially around the reading workshop and other other things that from what the from what we're seeing on the DESI website are not necessarily seen as good evidence-based practices. And I'm just hoping to maybe talk about if we're looking at any changes within that tier one curriculum. So.
So Dr. Saunders, let's, let's give a response with the caveat that this is an SO, this is a student opportunity act presentation. So it, it is relevant. It's applicable. However, we will be doing EL, elementary ELA curriculum progress updates in and of themselves as well in the future. So let's be responsive. Let's have this, but, but so Ms. Saunders, let's just, we're just going to sort of probably omit the amount of discussion on this particular topic. Cause I think you're asking about something that's more specific than this broader topic.
And we're going to, and it will be, is it me set? Next, yeah, because my.
I mean, I, I think it has a lot to do with this topic, honestly.
It does. It does. But this is a general, this is a general like overview on the student opportunity act. And, and it's so it's, it's not like, so the ELA curriculum elementary level has been a controversial issue for some folks. So there's going to be a lot of discussion that we're going to want to have on that that we'll get into deeper when we're having an actual agenda item on that. So, you know, Dr. Saunders is about to respond and give you response, but I don't want to have like a full deliberation on that particular topic right now. As you know, this committee is very vested in the, in special education in the district. So we're certainly not trying to deflect. It's just that I'm trying to run a fairly efficient meeting. And this is, it's, it's veering off course a little bit, especially where we're already planning on presenting in more depth on the particular issue in the future.
So when we look at what we wanted for our students and when we work with our teachers and our reading specialists around what was important for us and our students' literacy, that we wanted to make sure that we were looking at all facets of how students learn to read and what are the components that we need out of place for them? And also what would we have to do in order to make that happen? Providing professional development. So we really looked at it holistically to see what we needed. And so we already had foundations in place, which was our phonics program. We didn't change that. That's been in place for probably about seven years, eight years before I got here. And we knew that we needed to create, we needed new resources because, excuse me, voices. So we needed more resources because what we were using was reading street and that was no longer. Even, it was very old, probably 2010. So, so we needed to move on from that. And so when we looked at what we wanted to make sure, we wanted to make sure that we had strong phonics. We want to make sure that we had strong language awareness programming for our students. And we also want to make sure that we had strong comprehension and that our students loved to read. And so when we looked at what was out there, we decided there wasn't one thing that was going to make that happen. And so we checked foundations. We added readers workshop, the comprehension piece, smaller instruction, targeted instruction. And then we had phonemic awareness K through chip. And so those are the pieces that we put together. We don't use the Pharnic program from Lucy Hawkins or what, you know, for Reader's Workshop, we use foundations. So those were the decisions that we made, wanted to make sure that we got all of those pieces. And then we brought in, it's also to work with our teachers around how to read, acquire reading skills. One of the things that we need to know as educators, what's the new research and so we're constantly keeping up with about that.
I just want to clarify that I am speaking to tier one support, which I do think is what this is about from my perspective. But I appreciate that there'll be another meeting about specifically the curriculum.
Yeah, and that is part of it and also tier instruction, right? Making sure that we have all those intervention in place for all the students. That when, when the core tier one instruction isn't enough, then what are we doing? And I just sort of, like, just to clarify, all of what Dr. Saunders just expressed, including the integrity program, is tier one instruction. So every child gets all of the components that Dr. Saunders just talked about. And then there are other things for tier two and tier three, that they're getting all, all three of those.
And foundations is well said, correct? So well said.
It is, it is. And that's a general education person.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Saunders. And Ms. Saunders, I'm not challenging you on the fact that it's applicable and relevant to this presentation. I'm just trying to indicate that we're going to get in more depth in all of this on a future agenda item. So I don't want to spend, you know, a lot of time talking about this because we'll advertise it a little bit better as well so that more than just CPAC members will be able to attend. Because there's, I think, I think the interest goes beyond just CPAC itself in, on that topic. And I can understand why you're here and why you're personally interested in that. And I'm not challenging that it's relevant. I just think that this discussion is better had when we have that agenda item, that topic on the agenda to discuss. That's all.
Thank you.
Okay, there's a question from Megan Berry of 11 Tad Lane that she has leveled using Q and A feature on Zoom. She asked, what are the deciding factors as to the students? Excuse me, sorry. What are the deciding factors as to what students are selected for a co-taught classroom? How many co-taught classrooms are being offered across the district?
So I would just answer it with Mr. Stapleton not being here. It really is decided on a student by student basis who's eligible for a co-taught classroom. It's really based on the IEP team process. And so there's no certain set of what qualifies or doesn't qualify. It really is looking at the whole profile of each individual child. And we don't necessarily have a set number of co-taught classrooms in each grade level. It's driven by how many students in each grade level have a co-taught experience on their IEP. So there's no easy answer for that.
Okay. Thank you, Superintendent Shannon. All right. Any other questions from anyone or follow up from Sperry or any other questions from CPAC panel in the area of the room? You can ask them anytime, but oh, sorry.
I think that some parents are concerned because.
Can you just state your name?
Oh, Sarah Davis, 160 Pharaoh Lane. I never said that. That when we were talking about the curriculum, I think some parents worry that the tier two and three is so different from what, for like what children need in tier two and three is different from what they're getting in tier one. It almost like they're kind of opposites. So I think that's why some parents get concerned about the curriculum. Because it can, I think, because of the fact that they're getting both, then we're looking at the data going forward for our students with disabilities. And that could potentially be part of the reason we have the gap. It's hard to close the gap with the two opposed programs.
And you're for an ELA.
Huh?
ELA.
ELA, yeah, like the Reader's Workshop isn't great for your kids that are tier two, tier three kids. They need scientific evidence-based reading instruction, not that other type of reading typically. So when they have both, it can kind of be, they're working against each other a little. So I think that could possibly make it hard to close the gap. Right, like, my son doesn't ever really need Reader's Workshop because he has scientific evidence-based reading instruction in the specialized curriculum. Right, but he's getting it because he has to be there. But the other programming is better and that's what teaches him to read.
There are different components to it. Yeah, so I, I understand what you mean.
I think that might be why people get concerned about that other reading program.
I see. So, I see, okay, I, I understand that. I think they, they, they're both good and they both complement each other. So they're not totally different, one support, they both support each other. So you're right, certain students need more time learning the codes to understand how to, to break that code, right? And so they struggle with that piece. They also still need to be part of a very rich environment where students are reading at their own level. Teachers are working with them in small group individual instruction on some of those concepts around comprehension and all those pieces. So that's, that complements it together. We don't want to do one in isolation. So I think that's a great, I think that's a great topic. And I think that gives me some information to think about how I can present it so that everybody sees exactly what it all is about. So thank you about that.
So this makes me think that, you know, what we can do is we can collaborate a little bit ahead of time with CPAC so we can address the items that are important to them in that presentation. And I think it will be edifying to people that may not even be aware of CPAC and what it's doing, may want to join or are not a member of CPAC and are still interested in this. So let's, and this is part of the reason why I don't want to get too deep into. This is an overview of, you know, our compliance SOA and what we're doing. And it goes beyond ELA. So that's, that's why, but, but however, the elementary ELA curriculum is of interest to people. And that's why we were planning on doing that. So I think, why don't we just make sure, so that, because I think we, we were able to give more substantive responses, more meaningful, valuing responses to questions like this. When we're collaborating a little bit ahead of time, we're able to get the data, the information, the facts together to give a more informed response, okay? Okay, I don't see anything else from any other community members. So why don't we just go around, you know, by the order, Mr. Dowd, do you have any questions related to the SOA?
No, no, nothing for me.
Okay, Ms. Hannah? Ms. Leskey?
Just ask for a point of clarification. When we're talking about population of students with disabilities, is that students on IEPs? Is it students on IEPs and 504s or just students within the district that are known to have a disability but perhaps don't qualify for an IEP? Because I think that those students could also exist. You could be dyslexic but not qualified because you're able to access, but you are a student with disability. So I'm just wondering if you can just clarify that population piece a little bit better for me?
Yeah, I think students with disability categorization through the state on the SOA and the data that I provided is students on IEPs.
On IEPs only, so that does not include any students on 504s. And it doesn't include any students who may have a learning disability, a diagnosed learning disability that the district's aware of, but is not currently. Okay, thank you.
That all was okay? That all?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. My question relates to the co-teaching. You said you expanded it to three through five?
Yes, grades three to five.
So what was it looking like before that?
So they would have push-in modeling. There was always support, but when you're doing co-teaching, you have to, you have to work very closely with that person and you're in that classroom a majority of the time. And there's different models. Sometimes there's co-teaching where there's a special education and a general education teacher in that classroom all day long. That isn't necessarily our model, but we have, but they are, they're put together and they have training on how do you build that relationship? How do you make sure that you're playing properly? How do you create the best environment for students? And so we spend a lot of time with professional development doing that. So a general education teacher and a special education teacher may be together for ELA, math, maybe some part of social studies. It all depends on the students' IEPs, but they would be there for a majority of the day. It doesn't mean that there aren't classrooms, there's other special education happening. It's just that there's, there, there's a lot, they're in there for a longer period of time. They don't pull them out.
Let me supplement the question.
Okay.
What levels was it offered at? Was that, was that model offered at before we expanded?
K through, so we've been expanding it. So it's K two and then the middle school and then in the high school. Now it's at Deer Hill. So it was, and I can't, I'm not exactly sure exactly where it started. Jeremy, like, did it start and trickle down? I'm, I'm not really.
So, okay, so it was K through two, six through eight, and then nine and 10? Because my understanding is we don't offer it.
We would.
Unless it's dictated by.
It was on an IEP. Right, we would, but it's nine, you're right, nine and 10. And then, and then now it's in Deer Hill.
Okay. Why, why, why? That, that's, it seems like a really odd gap to have. I, and I mean, I don't know if it's a solving problem, it just seems really strange. It's like, elementary, you'd think that like.
Yeah.
It would be even before like high school.
And I'm not sure it wasn't actually happening. They got specific training and they built it, they just built it to be a stronger model.
Well.
Michael can answer, Mr. Stapleton.
Glad it is there now.
Yeah.
Okay, I just, when I saw that, I was thinking to myself, because I know it exists at the, you know, some high school levels. So, so, all right, okay. I'll, I'll get over it, but as long as we're, we're doing it now, that's, that's great. Any other questions from anyone on the Student Opportunity Act? Before we move on? No? Okay, well then, thank you so much, Dr. Saunders and Mr. Roberts. Appreciate your presentation. Thank you for the participation and questions from CPAC. Moving to the budget section of the agenda and turn the meeting to our Director of Finance and Operations, Susan Owen.
Thank you. And you can be sharing, right?
Yes. Apologies. That should work.
Thank you.
This will be the March finance report, where we have to date to March 1st. I'm going to, it's the same information. It's in every, every month stating what the budget is. What we're really looking at is the deficit. So we have a shortfall of 900, 1,920, slight increase from last month, 394,000. Again, some of that is, we did have a new student come in that we are questioning, I believe, in our special education. And that's part of the reason that that shortfall has gone up. I think it was about a $22,000 hit to the budget. We are closely monitoring our accounts, everything's been frozen. We, we have a pretty good handle on how we're going to spend down or reduce our deficit. We're working, we're checking any type of savings that we can look at. And you can see the special education tuitions, it went up slightly from 180 to 206. And that similar is the transportation for special education as well, went up very slight. You can see some of the budget line items, you can see the tuition's have gone up slightly. Utilities, sorry.
But have the tuition go up?
utilities continue to grow. I mentioned special education education, the student supplies, materials. And then our regular transportation is now running in the deficit of about $10,000. Hopefully with some of the changes that we've made and implemented fees, we're going to see a lot of these shortfalls go away. Let's just give you a breakdown by school, what percent of the budget completed? So a majority of 70%, which is pretty much on line of where we are in school year. I'm not going to go into circuit breaker. This is just an explanation of what circuit breaker is, how much we received, will we be receiving this year? It's a program that reimburses 75% of eligible special education costs. It exceeds four times state average per pupil foundation. And it supports, you know, it's crucial for district managing financial challenges of specialized education services to address significant needs.
So is that, is that, I've, I've never heard you say that four times thing. Is that on the, I'm not seeing that on the, the. Oh, there, oh, there it is, right there. It's four was written out, that's why.
True.
So I'm glad, I'm glad you brought that sentence to my attention. I've just probably been there and I just missed it, but I've always wondered the formula.
Order capital, so we, we have our order capital and what we, what we would be seeing from town. We're going to continue with our bus lease, we're going to continue with our electric bus lease. The town graciously gave us funding to replace our Uber, which is retired and being surplus for parks probably. We, we are replacing all projectors, I should say all projectors. After the projectors at Osburg and have Deer Hill, the security equipment and P systems for the Osburg and Deer Hill are also on that list, including updates and additions to cameras and security equipment for Deer Hill, Main School, High School. The furniture was approved, so the middle school home offices and the high school of being clock control, which is very old, rickety looking, will be getting facelift. We luckily have a new, will have a new 15 passenger activity bus for the athletic department after July 1 as we still continue to struggle with transportation for more so our spring sports than, than the others. Because of a lot going on in the spring that we had to contract out, which is much more costly than when we have our own drivers doing it. And then we granted the $75,000 to extend a sidewalk out here on street where it's partially grass and then turns over the sidewalk. So that's just capital.
I know that.
This is all this about grants and you can see it's minimal, I tried to run my way. Our other grants slowly, some of them are slowly increasing, some are slowly decreasing. The ones that are, you know, quite important to special education, 240 grant, what brings in over $350,000 to us to help fund programs. And then our macro program again is also a huge grant that comes in, about $360,000. The other ones are very, very slight, anywhere from $15,000 to $10,000. And then our revolving accounts, you can see here what's coming in. And you can see off to the right in the red, we have some shortfalls. So we know our after school care program is about $40,000. It needs to be transferred from the town over to the schools, so that will make that deficit go away. Our school athletic revolving, the spring deposits have not gone in yet, so that should eliminate some, if not all of that deficit in athletic revolving. And then our school transportation, you can see, is in a slight deficit as we're collecting transportation. We're starting already for next year. This is just breakdown, has not changed a year of school budget and how many FTEs and headcount in each, each area. Covering by personal, regular education, the end of special education, distributed salaries. And you can see 60% of our budget is regular salaries. These are breakdowns for each school and how they're funded, how the physicians are funded. So it gives you, you know, how many are funded by the budget, how many are funded by grants and how many are funded by revolving. And this is just a district-wide, how it's working out. Total grant, our grants support 11.3 FTEs, revolving supports 22.9 FTEs for physicians. We have our updated enrollment for April 1st. Just come in and it shows the class size of the elementary levels and it gives you the total, 1394 as of April 1st, reported. And this is just a month-to-month comparison for the year of what's happened so far. And then our utilities, so you can see we have used more kilowatts in electricity than we did last year. And we have certainly paid more than we did last year. So last year we paid, at this point in the year, we spent about 339,000. And this year we're at 38,000. So it's almost a 50%, 50,000 jump. Then we get into the gas, it's a little bit different. We have used water, 132 versus 128. But our cost is slightly down. So we are trying it really whether related on what, what our utilities look like and what our contracts with the energy supplies are. But the gas is slightly lower than what we spent last year this time. And then we're getting to school service and meal count. So you can see how many meals by school, how many second lunches. And that's where Mr. Donald was talking about, the extra lunches, we're not charging the regulation amount. So that will, what would be changed? And it's only for a second, for a child to purchase a second lunch. Um, choose to purchase a second lunch. Right, uh, just about seventy percent participation rate. Um, just some updates transportation, next year we're gonna be adding an extra bus to our daily use, we do carry time. And after less crowded rides, um, to rest, we'll commit a meeting on the thirty-first of what was, um, held to raise our transportation. Be from three fifty to four fifty, in order to help cover the budget shortfalls, um, in addition, um, what was taken to increase the athletic fee from two fifty to four twenty-five. Both have caps, and then to further address our transportation challenges. The department, as I mentioned, will be receiving a fifteen passenger bus, helps for, um, transporting average to and from gate to practices. Just at the conclusion, um, leadership team, central office are actively exploring, um, ways to reduce our current deficit by identifying. Central savings opportunities, um, we have, you know, staff that are going out on these, we have. Long-term subs replaced, so there are, there are some savings there, and we're, we're trying to capture as much as we can as we, um, move into the final, so, this budget.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Owen, uh, just to supplement that, um, we do have. Uh, a plan to address this year's deficit, and we anticipate that we will be, um, able to successfully address that. And in terms of the budget that we just passed for the next fiscal year, that, that was a balanced budget, so. Um, we do feel that we're going to be avoiding types of issues in the future. Any questions from Ms. Owen relative to her monthly budget update, Mr. Dial?
Um, yeah, so, on the circuit breaker, I'm gonna hang on this for a moment. Seventy-five percent of spent expenses that we see four times per pupil, is that on a student by student basis, or is that in the aggregate? You know, I'll, I'll hand, and, and this might be something we need to be feeling a little more offline.
It's student by student.
Student by student, okay. Um, that's helpful, and then, um, how is the per pupil calculated? Who does that?
So the state does that, and they do that by adding up all of the costs of the district, and they divide it by the number of students.
And where do they get our costs?
So they get it from all of our salaries and all of our utility, all of those costs.
I think you mean what database, like how do they physically?
So they get it from my year, uh, in our year, yeah.
Your, okay, so it's, it's, it's informed by, and that, that's, is that audited?
Yes.
So it's informed by our audit report. That's helpful, um, the reason I, I ask is it, it is, I think, a worthwhile endeavor to. For this purpose, if not other purposes, but just for this purpose alone. To endeavor to ensure that our expenses are appropriately allocated in such a way that our cost per pupil is accurate. And not overstated, because i- if this, with this equation. Where they can set their percent of costs in excess of four X cost per pupil, a small decrease in cost per pupil can be significant additional. Circuit breaker revenue, so, I mean, just like. And, 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 you know, like, I just did it quick, if you did a five grand, if you had a special education student with a two hundred thousand dollar placement. And you dropped your, um, regular tuition, your, your cost per pupil by five grand, it's something that looks like, but that's, that's, that's an increase of ninety thousand dollars that would come out of check, uh, not check, seven, out of, out of the circuit breaker. So, it's, it's worth, if we aren't already, just paying really close attention to our expense line items, to make sure that they, they align with, with where they should go, and. I know that, some prior conversations I've had in different contexts, there was some discussion about how our retirement. Uh, that we may have had inflated cost per pupil versus other districts, because the way our retirement benefits are factored into our per pupil cost. So I don't know the details on that, but it's just says to me that it's worth investigating and looking into that, and I'm, I'm happy to, to join you in investigating that.
Yeah, I think we could look at that.
Yeah, we should look at it, yeah, um, I mean, your very point.
It's a save for every district.
There's something about, because, and I, I, I can't do this chapter verse.
Yeah.
But there was something, and I talked to our prior superintendent about this, because I, this question came up, why are per pupils higher than other districts? And he had looked into it and came back that it had something to do with the way retirement benefits or something is shared with the town. And other districts don't have the same thing, and I'm, I'm, I'm just not sure what it was.
We can look at that, definitely.
So that, that might be something to pay.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, any year report. Is, is pretty extensive, um, and then we have an outside, we have to, we have to put, um. Report it to Desi, and then we have to be audited by an outside, um, agency, and they tell you if there's any findings about, and not on wood. The five years I've been here, there's been no findings.
And to be clear, I'm not suggesting, cook the books, just, just put that right out there, but, um, it is worth making sure that we've got the right books.
Yeah.
And if there, if there are, if there are interpretations or decision points that other districts are taking. To their advantage that we're not, then we should, we should at least make sure it's an informed decision.
Yeah, and just sort of along the lines of circuit breaker, I had a nice meeting with Senator O'Connor this week. And one of the things that he talked about was that his, his goal is to get to a place where circuit breaker is a hundred percent reimbursing of. Specialized out of district tuitions, um, and so, um, or over the full. You know.
Hundred percent.
Four times, yeah, um, and so he's hoping to get an additional five percent for next year, an additional five percent for the year after, so increments of five percent. Um, so, you know, his thinking is that that is one of the most equitable ways to get one money districts. Um, and, and, and I agree with that, because it does impact us student to student as opposed to sort of overall numbers. Um, so hopefully we'll get to that place, but in the meantime, I think looking at, you know, what our per pupil is, is important. Um, but hopefully Senator O'Connor will be successful in getting us additional funding for circuit breaker in general.
Okay, well, looking at this, I'll thank you. Ms. Hannah, do you have anything for, uh, Ms. Owen relative to monthly update?
You do.
Thank you, Hannah, Ms. Luskey.
None for me, thanks.
Thank you, I do not have any questions, uh, either, Ms., Ms. Owen, thank you very much for that, uh, we do have, uh, moving on to gifts. Ms. Owen, do you want to summarize those for us?
Sure, so we, we received a check of five thousand dollars from South Shore Union Navy Council, um, for professional development when we, to, to, on behalf of the Cohasset. Yeah, on behalf of the Cohasset Diversity Committee for professional development, um, I believe this is for most of, help.
With essential partners, professional development be provided in March.
Yes.
Okay. And second one?
The second one?
I think that was from C E F to supplement the Shakespeare Theater, um, experience, uh, because they need additional transportation costs, the C E F provided that money, and the amount, uh, amount of, uh, one thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars. So these, uh, items have been attached to the agendas, items F two and F three respectively, we'll vote on them individually. Uh, are there any, however, is there any discussion relative to either of them right now before we take motions on? Okay, seeing none of their motion on the floor to approve the gift of five thousand dollars from the South Shore Union Council on behalf of the Cohasset Diversity Committee.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Mr. Dial, second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Luskey, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, sentience, motion carries by a majority vote of four members. Uh, thank you so much to the Cohasset Diversity Committee for that, five thousand dollars. Uh, Ms. Owen, have we developed, I think we did develop that, that letter that we send out now on receipt of gifts, right?
Yes.
Okay, so let's send a letter out to them to thank them for that. Uh, moving on to F three, the gift in the amount of one thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars from the Cohasset, uh, Education Foundation to supplement the Shakespeare Theater experience. Is there a motion on the floor to approve that gift or accept that gift? Motion's been made by Mr. Dial, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Luskey, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, sentience, motion carries by a vote of, Ms. Hannah, did you say aye?
Aye.
Okay, by a vote of four members, so, Ms. Owen, please let me know, will we accept the gift, and can you please issue a?
Absolutely.
Thank you, I mean, that one's supplemental, so we may have already issued a letter, but, um, just put it on your radar. Um, moving on to the last item in the budget block of the agenda. Is a, uh, vote to approve advertising in the school district. Um, and it implicates policy K H B, uh, which is item F four in the agenda. I guess I will turn to the superintendent of schools to provide a very brief description of this item, and then we're gonna have any discussion and a vote.
So, given our budget conversations, I wanted to bring forward the advertising in schools policy. This was a policy that was approved just two years ago, but I think, um, given our situation, we should revisit. It and the one line in this policy, um, we would like, or we're requesting that you sort of. Exercise your right to approve advertising for fee as deemed appropriate. Um, two years ago, we were told, couldn't do any advertising as a district, and we're wondering now, could we revisit the idea of advertising. On, um, athletic fields and athletic spaces, um, for a fee, so that we can. Continue to bring in revenue, um, that we have been unable to do in the past.
Thank you for that introduction, Superintendent, is there any discussion from any members, uh, Ms. Dial's reviewing the policy, I'll skip over it for now.
I've got, it's a question, um, what is the, what's the ask of the, what are we asked?
So what we'd like to do is be able to. We would just like to.
Revising the policy.
No, we're not revising the policy.
Take a vote specifically on this request, because we have to do it on a sort of case by case based and deem appropriate, we have to deem it appropriate what she's asking.
Right, and so, are, are you proposing anything in particular?
We are just proposing that we are allowed to start seeking advertisement and sponsorship. What will happen is that I will sit down with Mr. Scott and Mr. Rotandi and will, and Ms. Owen, and we'll come up with a, you know, what. The right fee structures are and things like that, and we can share that with you, but first we want to at least have permission to start pursuing it.
So, I don't, I don't, well, I'll just, I don't think you need permission to start exploring it, I think what this would be is, would you have that proposal, then you'd come to us and we, we, uh, delivering and approve then of policy. I don't, I, I'm not comfortable giving a blanket approval at this point, um, for whatever, whatever happens, I'd like, I'd like to see it be part of it, especially as a, as an issue of first impression, maybe. As we see what the things are, and get contours, but, um, I, I'd certainly want to see it as it kind of goes forward.
Okay, so, just to clarify, the proposal is that we give blanket authority for them to advertise in the athletic facility, so you can vote against that. But that's the proposal, so that's what we're gonna discuss. Um, okay, well, I'm just, I just, all right, uh, so, any discussion from anyone, uh, well, Mr. Dial, are you, do you have any questions?
Yeah, if the proposal, if the proposal is blanket authority to advertise in athletic fields, I would not support that, I'd want to see what that is, and then work together, and. Actually, maybe you through the policy subcommittee to figure out what a policy contours of that would look like.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dial, Ms. Hannah?
Well, uh, being near the school board, I don't understand why you put this in place two years ago, so I'd love to understand the background there.
So, I, I think it was just revised, but I think.
Why, why we put what in place two years ago?
The, the policy that you can't advertise.
So I can share a little.
Well, I don't think we put it in place two years ago, I don't.
Okay, what's the twenty twenty-three?
The revision?
There's, sometimes there's some slight language changes that.
I don't think there was any language change in this particular proposal, I think this was the, this was just a breakdown, we reviewed it, and did not make any changes to it from the two thousand.
Because they weren't, some of them weren't dated, there was no dates on, so.
But I did get a little bit of history as to why it was originally created, um, and so, there were two reasons, one was a. Decision, from what I understand, that we wanted to keep our space just pure, without bringing in any advertisement. Um, and I believe many years ago, there was, um. A fundraiser where they sold bricks to raise money for athletics, and sort of at that time, it was, this was how we were gonna do this, and as a result, we weren't gonna sell advertisement. And so, it's been a policy since then, um, but I think we're in a different time and a different place, and in a different situation. And the money that was raised, I don't know when that was, you know, it's been, I haven't figured that part out yet, but, um, none of that money is still around.
Um, the way I'm reading this, though, is that, like, the policy currently is that advertising may be allowed in material produced by, um. Approved by the school principal, so like, we've already given blanket to the school principal. Am I reading that right?
If it's produced by student organizations, so if they're advertising, like, you know, uh, the prom or something like that, or, no, prom, it's not, yeah, it's outside.
Or they're raising money for their trips to Guatemala.
Right, right, exactly.
Okay.
Commercial, we're not allowed.
So I would, I mean, I'm a, I brought this up before, I'm a big proponent of it, I think that it helps us, and it helps us connect with the community. I think, in so many ways, and I would say that it, should it just be a transactional, um, event that happens where. They pay us money and we slap a logo on the field out there or anything, I actually think there's a great opportunity here to create like a sports marketing club. And allow students to participate in this, it's a huge business opportunity for them to get some early access experience in the world of sports marketing. Um, and I also think that there are, like, activations that they could lead at these games. That make it a lot more valuable for a business in town to wanna be a part of than just throwing their logo on something. Um, so I think there's a lot further that we can take this than just a logo on the field, personally. So, like, and I guess my proposal would be like, I get, we gotta start somewhere, but I would love to see a forward progression to make this. Really part of something and let the students get something out of it.
Yeah, I think that's a, a really good point, I mean, obviously, I think we're trying to extract the learning, learning experiences from anything within the school. Uh, and I think you're right, Ms. Hannah, it has to start somewhere, like, we didn't approve this, that would be difficult to, to deliver.
You can still approve it, you know, the proposal is on.
We, we, we could, in a more specific proposal, right now it's not the proposal, but I think that, like, someone could, a parent or a school community member or a teacher, anyone could lead that effort. Once this is approved, like, we could approve this, and, yeah, there could be transactional ones, but there could also be. Opportunities for student involvement in some of them as well, uh, I think it's a great op, I think it's a great, great point, um. But remember, like, what we would be voting on today would just be that blanket approval for athletic facilities. Um, and then, we could, I think, grow that, or develop that, or refine it, in whatever way, you know, uh. Someone saw fit, if there was a more precise proposal for student involvement, um, I think the way Mr. Dial sees it is like. Maybe he likes that, but he would want to see a specific proposal before we're approving it, I think, if that, that's the.
It's just that, it's, it's a big change, and I wouldn't want it, I'd want the school committee to be more involved as, as we develop it, so we get.
I don't disagree with that.
And, and also as a first hearing of it, like, this is a big, a big ask to just kind of lump on, you know, pull it for agenda item out.
But this is something too, that should we have an athletic subcommittee that they could be part of that. Down the line.
I don't think it needs to be a subcommittee, I think that, like, some, I think that a group could, like, any, like, any initiative, you can get, like. A group together, like an ad hoc group, like the cell phone task force that was just. Put together, like, and, and you could do it if you wanted to develop some sort of experience, I mean, people, if you had a, a subset of, of people that wanted to do that, I think, we could do that. I, I, I mean, I, look. I think all the superintendent is asking right now was whether we're comfortable giving her approval to. To allow businesses to advertise in our athletic facilities, if you're in favor of that, you should vote for it. Um, or make a motion and vote for it, or if you're against it, you should vote against it. Um, I, I, I think that, like, developer, refining the idea right now is not what's in front of us, and so, Ms. Hannah, like, I don't disagree, I think it's a great idea what you're coming up with. But like, that's not what we're voting on, and if you think that that's what we should vote on, then I would just vote against it right now.
Then, what, what is holding us back, like, it doesn't seem like this policy is actually preventing us from selling sponsorships. There's just one step in place to say, bring it here to the school committee, we'll vote on it.
Yep, that's right.
Okay, so like, yeah. But we're not, there's, there hasn't been any effort out there to try and get sponsorship.
Because this has been read as it was not allowed. And so that was, that was the, because that was, well, the intent of it was that it was not allowed at all. And so, if we're changing the intent of it, that, that's fine, we can start exploring it without school committee approval, but. The intent of this policy was that there is not to be any. Advertisement, um, based on the history of this, and so, we're looking for. Just approval that there's a shift in the intent that we are allowed to advertise. Because then we can start to proceed with planning, if there's still no intent to advertise, then we're not going to plan. So that really was my ask.
I would like to make a motion.
It's supposed to be safe, and then I have a question for you anyway, so we'll get back to you. Mrs. Leskey?
Hi, and I sort of turned to our legal eagles on this one, whether or not, just as it stands, I think when. Things are open, when there is a possible advertisement that's ready to go up on the athletic fields, I think that sounds great. But I do think some oversight or and or modifying policy as it is with language about what is appropriate for that. Because I'm thinking specifically, it shouldn't be political or religious, and that hasn't come forward at all in this discussion. I don't think that has a place, but those are certainly community organizations within our town that may well want to have an audience of parents and students on. On fields. But I'm also hearing, and so I just need some, maybe some help understanding. That actually what we're voting on is to say, it's okay to go out and look and see if someone would like to put something on the sports field. And then I will bring to you the school committee for conversation, these seven options. Is, is that correct? Okay, so we're really just talking about, is it okay to look for this specific location?
Well, it's even just to start planning.
To plan, to look.
That the intent has changed.
So is there a vote on this, or is it just more of like, I, I think we all agree that.
Well, I don't necessarily with any, I didn't want to ask Mr. Dial for clarification on his assertion that this is a major change. I want, and I'm earnestly asking you, I'm not being, why do you feel that way? Because i- if, because you know that I'm always sensitive to allowing everyone to divert before we do anything like that, I don't see this as being overly impactful, why do you see that, see it that way?
Well, I mean, there was obviously a decision in two thousand four not to do it. I think there is, there is a contingent of people who might not want. Signs on the sports fields there, I think that's, that's, and I, I used to, I used to not want advertising, and your school advertising is. Can be seen as an endorsement of certain vendors, could be seen as an endorsement of certain thing by the, by the public schools, so I think there's just. An element of public discourse that, that led to a policy like this that we haven't had yet. But if, if the request is getting the school committee's view as whether or not we'd be open to it. I would be happy making a motion expressing the openness of the school committee to considering advertising in our athletic fields. And even directing the superintendent to explore opportunities with potential partners to, to do so, I'm happy to make that motion.
I would second that.
And if, 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 and when that time comes for making motions, I will go ahead and make that one. If that is where we want to go.
Okay, so is, is there, is there any other discussion on it before we take that motion, Mr. Dial, just? There is a motion on the floor. Okay. Now, would we, I think what I'm hearing from the vote is that we might want, we would want, want to maybe add the caveat that. We are, we are deeming this appropriate to. Explore advertising athletic facilities, but we would like final say in terms of what is actually advertised.
We're not changing the, the policy, we would get to, we still reserve the right to approve advertising, we're just saying, we are, we are willing to approve that.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to generally approve advertising with the caveat that we need to approve this specific advertising.
Just to, there's, there's a motion on the floor to express support for the. Partnering with advertisers for our athletic fields and. Even a direction of superintendent, superintendent to. Seek out those sponsorships and bring them to the school committee for.
Okay, so this is not what you're asking, Superintendent Shannon, so this won't, this won't be deemed sort of a authorization of the policy? This is us taking the vote to instruct you to exploit these opportunities, okay?
I think that's fine, because I think that's ultimately what my next steps were.
Okay, all right, so is there a second to that motion? All right, motion may be made by Mr. Dial, seconded by Ms. Hannah, all in favor, aye? All opposed? Sentience? Motion carries by a majority vote of four members, so Superintendent Shannon would ask you to please explore that.
Start right after vacation.
Could I, could I also suggest that, for the reasons of Ms. Leskey's reasons, that this is also, is brought to the policy subcommittee? Because there are some considerations like limitations on. That doesn't necessarily need to slow you down, but I do think that if we are going to be more open to it, it's worth looking at.
Yeah, I, I actually think that that falls within our anti discriminatory, like.
I actually.
Policy, but.
What we'll end up doing is creating guidelines for said advertisements along with the pricing structure. And that that would be part of the guideline, is that they can't do X, Ys.
All right, that was surprisingly. Moving on.
With no actual real impact on the result.
With, with, with no real decision. That was a really interesting. Situation there, okay, the community relations block, does anyone have any reports from subcommittee or liaison positions?
Give a brief update, the high school school council met on the twenty fifth. March with a discussion on current standing of the budget and potential impacts to school. An update for the cell phone task force. A great and robust conversation about continuing, about how to have difficult conversations. And ways in which the students felt they might structure the viewing of the movie Six Triple Eight. So it was very thoughtful in addition to also getting the student input, input on, on. A I in schools and how that might be addressed through the handbook, and so more to come on both of those.
Any other reports? Okay, I met with the elementary P S O in Deerville, and they were talking about reviewing the homework policy there at that building, so just. Give everyone a heads up that that's happening, it's in the P S O. All right, moving on to the, the last block of the agenda, last substantive block of the agenda, the school committee governance section, this is the. Force of the agenda, I was reminded, we take the vote now, not during the public hearing, that we had at five forty-five to six o'clock this evening relative to school choice, we had a public hearing. There was, there was no public input on that matter. The school committee had a brief deliberation on it, so would there be a motion on the floor relative to school choice this time?
I want to make a motion to, this one, what are we moving to?
We are either moving to, there's only two choices, you can either move to elect to participate in school choice or to decline to participate in school choice.
I would move that we decline to participate in school choice.
Okay, there's been a motion to decline to participate in school choice program, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Leskey, motion was made by Mr. Dial, all in favor, aye? All opposed? Sentience? Motion carries by a majority vote of four members, Superintendent Shannon? And again, let's revisit on an annual basis. All right, topics not reasonably anticipated, there are none, approval minutes, I think we have one set of minutes to approve, they're included as. Item H one in your packet, they are from the. Wednesday, March nineteenth, school budget, public hearing. And. All members. No, excuse me, so, Mr. Dial, you are not in attendance, so you will need to abstain from this vote?
Happy to do so, Mr. Call.
Okay. Presuming everyone has looked through it, are there any proposed revisions or discussion points relative to the minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented in item H one? Motion's been made by Ms. Leskey, is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Hannah, all in favor, aye? Opposed? Sentience?
Oh, I'll stay, I was totally abstaining by not saying anything.
The motion carries by a vote, majority vote of three members, so those meeting minutes have been approved. And lastly, executive session, there is a reason to move into executive session, that, that reason is number three. In chapter thirty A, section twenty-one, small a, that is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. We will need a motion to not only move into executive session but to not reconvene in open meeting. Is there a motion to that effect? Motion been made by Ms. Leskey, is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Hannah, this motion must be conducted in roll call, Mr. Dial?
Aye.
Ms. Hannah? Ms. Leskey? Aye, Craig McLewen, motion carries by a vote of four members, and we are now in executive session, so if you're watching at home, we will not be reconvening, the meeting has concluded for all intents and purposes. And we thank you so much for your participation. Contact this.